Thank you. All right, we will call the meeting to order. It is six thirty-three. Will the secretary please take the in-person role?
Trustee Bloom, yeah, trustee Chuck Porter here, trustee Fairfax here, trustee Ben Boulain here, trustee Rogers. Oh, sorry, trustee.
Here.
Trustee Rogers. Oh, I can't take her yet because we like to, oh, sorry.
That's right.
And trustee Boss is out.
The third quarter, we will have a, uh, is there a motion to approve the remote participation of trustee Rogers? Move on my second by Virginia. Uh, are there any questions? Any discussion? Bearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. It is approved.
Trustee Rogers?
Welcome to the meeting.
Thanks.
Uh, the next item will be our approval of our minutes, uh, from our May twenty-ninth meeting. Uh, are there, does anyone have any, uh, changes?
No.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Okay. With that, um, sorry, I'm trying to get back the packet, but I can't get on them.
Go ahead.
All right. All right. Yeah. If there's no adjustments, are there any, is there a motion to approve events?
Yeah.
Well, here. Is there a motion to approve events? Move them by, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes are approved. Uh, the next item will be, uh, public comments. I did not receive any public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Uh, do you wish to make a public comment?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, hello Ted.
Hey, well.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, am I late?
Oh.
You're good.
Just wanted to fix some things.
Please have, uh, then this will reflect Ted Boss's attendance. The next item will be trustee comments and calendar. We have the, the two items here, uh, of notes, uh, the Saturday, June twentieth, July twenty-seventh, not June, July, uh, twenty-seventh, the board will have a booth at the Oak Park Library's markets. Um, so we will need to coordinate, uh, who is able to attend. Um, and, uh, for that, should only be two trustees at a given time to avoid, uh, any open meetings, uh, but potential risks, uh, of that, but, um, I could help coordinate, uh, that sign up for when folks are available. Uh, if you are not, that is completely understandable. This is, uh, a voluntary opportunity for us to be out, but um, see, I know it's not gonna, I know July and is enough, is a frequent travel time for folks, so. I can, I'll follow everyone via email, um, following today.
Thank you.
All right, let's see.
Well, I included island, uh, it isn't the order. If you are interested in attending, please let us know. We'd be happy to.
Is there a deadline that you can go by?
No, I don't think there's an online registration, so it is okay. And then, um, obviously, sell the invitation for the barbecue, uh, just came and read and asked.
That will be, and that is Wednesday, September eleventh. I am going to try to make the email, but I gotta check with work because that's, I'm up after the election.
Yeah.
I may be occupied. But if we're, i- if we are hopefully at a point in time where we are, um, live with, uh, a job listing and improving that there might be value in trying to attend to, um, citizen candidates or meet with candidates.
Yeah.
Um, which we have, they know that are going to wind up, if any more of them are in the process. Uh, I'm gonna see if I can make that work, but we'll see. Um. Uh, if you're aware, or sorry, before I get to, any other trustee comments or calendar items that we should be, that the rest should be aware of?
Uh, book fair. Yes, July twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I haven't been getting those dates.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, twelve, thirteen.
Thank you for that reminder. Anything else, Marilyn? Okay. Uh, Susie, anything for your report?
Yeah, I was just kind of focusing on keeping the day of today operations operational. And so our job is in, you know, not the, not the face of the library, so we don't really attend events on behalf of the library, um, but we are, we're doing our best, um, as you can see from the additions, when we get to the terminations, we did have a director design. We worked together to figure out, um, a solution for that, so, um, you know, we'll just kind of try to take things in stride and do the best we can.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to staff reports. We have our strategic preparation report.
Yeah, and we just wanted to highlight a few different things, um. I was really impressed with the engagement on the engagement sheet. The, uh, page and services manager worked together with the park district at Dole to, uh, do a display of the ceramics that, um, an older, an active adult ceramics class, um, did, and they, they were really excited to collaborate with them. And they spent a couple of months working on getting pieces to display, and those are at Dole, um, and they're gonna be displayed within summer, so I really encourage you to check that out. And then we did a May the fourth, um, multi-generational event, several members, it was a department-wide, you know, event where they had lots of fun things. The pictures are really great, um, to see staff kind of engage that way, and that was a really good engagement piece. And then, um. I think you want to. Um, so. So Suzie, um, public safety and social services, um, manager, or I'm sorry, director Rob Simmons and manager of public sa- safety Erin Alonso went to a community stakeholder emergency preparedness meeting, uh, hosted by the village. Um, it's in preparation for the Democratic National Convention coming to Chicago in August. Um, so details around the community emergency notification plan and how stakeholders can collaborate to create coordinated safety strategies during the convention, um, were discussed. Uh, special collections have started open hours again for the public, um, something that we halted during the pandemic. Um, but special collections librarian Carrie Bacon, uh, collaborated with the communications team to create signs, emails, and social media posts to promote the new hours. Um, so they started in June, and actually, they've had quite a few people come, so, um, we're delighted how that turned out. Uh, May is our official start of, uh, budget planning for twenty twenty-five. Uh, so leadership and management teams have been meeting and will continue to meet going forward. Um, just talking about how we can have a balanced budget for twenty twenty-five. Um, that fosters our strategic initiatives, financial stability, and success for the library and staff. Um, our collection management librarian, Dante Nefferson-Joseph, went to the first Indie Lab Summit in Columbus. Um, it was a day-long summit, um, and it's an organization that connects independent publishers and librarians um, and finding ways to help with communication so that buying independent titles is a little bit easier for libraries. She sat on the reader's advisory, we'd use an awards, uh, driving enthusiasm for frontless panel, um, and they discussed what libraries need from the publishers in order to be able to purchase materials, things like submitting books for reviews and library awards. It was a full.
It was a full month. I was gonna say, so on the anti-racism and equity sheet for May, we had, um, it's, we celebrated two different cultures, so we did Jewish American Heritage Month for the first part of the month, and we did that in the idea box as long as I'm having, as along with them having cultural celebration. Um, and then we also celebrated Asian Pacific Islander Desi American Heritage Month in the second half of May. And they also were featured in the idea box and had a community celebration as well. I will say it was, you know, it was a really great effort and, and the collections team that we overseas, you know, we split the display space downstairs too. And so it was a, it was a, a great amount of work, but we're grateful that we can celebrate both cultures, um, and this as well.
And any question?
I had a quick question about the virtual chat service and, um. I see that we're using them less and less. If we have folks who were using them, are, are we sort of chipping that top act towards email questions rather than the, the chat?
Yes.
Okay.
So I will say, um,
I completely understand it's being used way less now that it was during COVID.
And I would also say that this, this community loves an email. I don't believe, but I got here and, yeah, I mean, get all the content. It goes to this larger group, and I was like, wow, people are really active on this email, because it's all like, was chat had really no place that, or they come in. So, no, here's, okay, so I think the computer dogs such a, so, you know, people know how to find us.
I have a feeling there will be like two or three people who like really, really liked this, and I will run into them.
Yeah.
And I will want to know how to redirect them, so.
Yes, on the website, yeah, everything is there.
Perfect.
So, who uses special collections?
Um, oh, uh, so wide variety of people, mainly researchers. Um, we have a lot of academics who are doing papers, books. Um, we've been trying to get the kids in, um, once in a while we'll get kids doing special projects, or we'll have classes coming to visit. Um, but a lot of the new people that are starting to pop in during open hours are people who just have an interest and maybe haven't been in the space, and they've heard about, oh, you know, open hours, and they can come in and we will pull materials for them. Um, if they truly need kind of a research appointment, um, that we do encourage, like, we're able to bring out materials that are like fully processed, but if they want to see more, then we do encourage them to make an appointment, so we can spend a little bit more time with them, and they can see a wider variety of materials.
Do we have any plans to like get these folks to meet each other? Because I feel like it's a very specific cohort of people.
It is, um, so we do some programming, um, so, and it really depends, like, we have Hemingway people, we have Frank Lloyd Wright people, we have Oak Park history people. Um, people usually come through very specific things, um, our collection is well-known, and so usually people will maybe even reach out to get email and say, hey, you want to pop in, you know, you have this, or can I see this? And that always gives, you know, us a heads up of like having things prepared. Um, but it's, it's not really like general public, oh, that looks cool. It's like, I know who have Hemingway's to your John letter, I would like to see that.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, it, it's very difficult coming from those different areas, and everybody has like a purpose for being there, that's usually like, I'm writing a book. Well, they're probably not going to be talking to the person who's in there doing like history on a Frank Lloyd Wright house.
So somebody from the Chover Tribune says, I need something about Percy Julian. And then.
Give us a call, stuff on my email.
Could there be more email?
Email it, yeah, that's, that's our thing here.
I know, you know, several years ago, then we did a grant with the Hemingway Foundation, um, to digitize, um, you know, large sections of that, the collection. How has that traffic been? Good, stable?
Um, you know, the pandemic really did change a lot of research habits. Um, we really tried to make sure that anyone who needed something, even if it wasn't digitized, we even tried to digitize it and get it out through email. And so once people realized that like, oh, I don't have to make the trip, I can just email and we will send me a copy. Um, digitization is always the goal, um, getting as much of the collection out, available to the public as possible. But digitization are, that's a huge, that's a hu- huge time-consuming thing. And sometimes we can do it in-house, but sometimes we have to send it out of house, and that's why grant funds were so helpful, because we can send it out and they can do it with them.
That was, that was, my follow-up is, you know, has there been grant opportunities to, that might be applicable to other sections of our collection? I know Hemingway is always popular, and we were able to partner with the foundation on that, which probably up our chances of that, but, you know, I know we have all our significant materials up there, and this was, you know, it, because also part of that grant, it's also cataloging everything. They took everything offsite, scanned, digitized it, and cataloged it, and did all of that, so that it was so easily accessible for remote research.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it was, and the, 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 the Hemingway Foundation also did, you know, did some of that like work, but it was our, our, our staff had to do a lot of it, you know, you know, most of the heavy lifting of the, you know. It, so, but I'm just wondering, you know, that would be something I think would be, you know, I'm sure you're, you're keeping eyes out for the grants on that, but it's just, it would be wonderful to be able to stay on that edge of being able to digitize more of our stuff to make it available and accessible for folks.
Um, so we got a collection of audio files from Stan West, um, which is a historian in Oak Park, um, focusing on like interviews that he did with prominent people. Um, so actually, we use some of the Barbara Bandler gift money, and we're sending that offsite to get digitized, and we'll be providing that. So, yes, we're always looking for grants, whether that's like state or national, um, but I'm, I'm gonna say, once we got that large grant, like, we're known. So, um, that's definitely something we're thinking about in the future.
Cool.
I just have to say, um, I, I did brag to somebody at work that we have the Hemingway collection in our library, when they were being really cocky about being a C, like a Chicago person. And I was like, oh, do you have one of Chicago's most well-known writers' special collection? They're like, yes, we do, and I was like, no, you don't.
Yeah.
Yes, bragging, bragging, right?
Yes, yes. And I also had to remind my husband, who is a Hemingway fan, don't judge too hard on me.
I think we're very passionate. I appreciate that.
We're really passionate.
I'm like, okay, I guess I can be passionate about a guy who shoots off his own, you know, one, one.
Who wants, who wants, for reboots, and with it, with hand grades in it, in a shotgun.
Right, that's, that's totally logical. That makes so much sense.
Absolutely.
And it grounds, I apologize.
So, all right, so we will move into our U statistics.
I had a question that actually came from a community member about computer access. Have we changed time limits on using the computers?
Don't listen.
Okay. I didn't think so.
All right. Any other questions on our statistics, everything? It's looking good.
Yeah, I just want to mention that we are planning to pilot a quarterly dashboard at the next meeting, so we'll see how that looks and.
Okay.
Take it from there.
That's good.
Change, Suzie, like, is there usually like, do we see it with summer, I feel like I've asked this question, so I'm so sorry. Like, a summer, like cyclical throughout the year, like, during the summer months, you have a lot of people come to the library with summer reading, and just as a cooling station and whatnot. So I'm just curious, in terms of how we look throughout the year versus how we look month of month over month, like, that's why I think we're gonna move to a quarterly, so that you guys can get that snapshot and compare last year, you know, compare quarters.
Yeah. Um, because, I mean, the biggest thing for this month of a month is the program attendance dipped down from May.
Right.
Because there are from, from April because of the eclipse, that was a huge, that kind of, um, May attendance is still a little lower than other ones, or this year, but not that much.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, it's still above the monthly average that we saw in twenty twenty-three. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it's just kind of looking at these metrics in a different way that might be more meaningful, so that you can see, like, how are we comparing?
Right, because I remember at our last meeting, being like, what happened with our program, and I said, oh, we have left stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Um.
And, and I think, yeah, then what they keep, you know, we trade off that for the community outreach, which is book by season.
Yeah, yeah, which is that spike in there, there was a big jump in May, which is double what you saw in April. Um, this is an expected, uh, book by season is a full swing, um.
With two books, two books.
Two books, but we are actually down writers, so it's been a little bit of a struggle this year.
Oh.
I was gonna ask, because one of our hopes, if I remember correctly, within electric book bike was that.
Yeah.
We would be able to encourage the number.
Your version or.
You, you know, I don't, I, I think people who don't want, who won't come to a writing, aren't comfortable in it.
Hmm.
Um, and I, I think that we are, we hired cheap book by assistants to do a lot of the writing, and we want back out. So that's putting some kind of undue strain on the rest of the staff, who, who aren't going to show up at the event.
Sure.
But maybe not feel comfortable, and I think with the E assist, I know they did a two-and-a-half-hour training today, safety training, because it's got some gusto. You know, I mean, it's got the E assist, so if we want to go, and, you know, we want to make sure everyone feels super comfortable on it.
Yeah.
Have you tried it?
I don't know, no. Not in the interim director, do this. We should all, yeah. But we can not, I can, like, yeah.
Yeah.
Leave, I'd leave.
Oh, leave.
All right, uh, attend the item for July.
Isn't what, the, the, the son of a workman's comp, I'm afraid, really, gives a little insurance.
And that's how we do, you know, they, I, I saw, I got to knowing a little bit more about it, we do have somebody come in from my safety. They're licensed, and they're very intense force, and so.
Elon Musk can impress. I wouldn't trust him, I mean, they don't, don't, don't feel like trans.
We find the commission, our place, you know, like, all of a sudden, they just start on fire, and then, yeah.
Our test.
Is it named, I guess, I know, but it's. Uh, I'm pretty, thank you, my, on Thursday, so it'll be in our story on Friday.
Yes. Okay, thanks. I'm unreasonably excited about that.
Me too.
And. I'm excited.
We're in a lot of them.
Yes, we are.
I posted, excuse you.
Yeah. I work part of the poll, but can I? Because I know that, or.
I'll be there.
I like put it on my Facebook page, please, you know, everyone votes.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's still write-ins, so I, I have, I was hoping for, you know, biking, making bike as base.
Scoot and living.
I had it right then, um. We're past that stage.
We're past that stage, they already, they let it in, let it in.
I do, absolutely.
So I did have a question, I probably asked it like eight hundred times, but who isn't the digital-only accounts? Are those getting converted into call accounts later, or?
Um, I believe so. I think that they have a lot of time to come in, like we send you the, and then they have a period, like three or four months, that they have to come, come into the library and show them, because what I just think is the card.
Okay, so I'm always wondering, like, who's getting the just digital-only access?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't know, anecdotally, I, like, anybody I know who's had digital access came in later and got it. So I'm wondering, is that the story for most of these people, or is it like a specific segment of the population that only gets the digital?
No, I think it's just like, if we need a card, we can, you can kind of sign up for one, but it does expire in like a few months. That's how they use, that is how the law, I don't know, to verify that, but.
Does it use more people with disabilities? Like, is that something, I mean, we have a lot of.
Yes, we have a lot, right, I think this is something different. This is like, if you just want to kind of get a card and, you know, get that to the work code, and then you can.
You're logging into the medical services.
Yeah.
This, you know, some of the audio bell shows.
Yeah, it's like, you can get some access to things, and then you're.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We have our employment report with, uh, different terminations and staff changes.
Um, I don't know why I've never asked this before, but I was just wondering, the under-terminations, it's, uh, voluntary as well, right? So it's just, because, am I wrong, or does the war termination, I just, I feel like I'm not in place. The war termination has a completely different connotation than like.
I don't think we've ever made a demarcation between, or separation.
Yes, because we want to make separation or something.
Yeah, maybe, uh, yeah, it's, you know, is it possible to change that to this, all the reports?
We can't change software system, that's reported, just through HR, this is our HR software, so Billy wants to move forward, I mean, I guess. I'm not sure what kind of work to give it, but that's, that's how we speak of it here, um, obviously, someone's been terminated.
Their, their term date, yeah, I don't know, we, that's what we do at the county every, that's, it's termination.
Really?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Everything's termination. Or is there termination?
It's, it's a very key difference from, in, in American ways.
And, well, I, I think, I think most.
Like, movements, terminations, separation, voluntary, I mean, like, that.
They're not gonna sell out if they're the chair or you're down.
It's not about, well, that's what I'm.
My, I think in common, I think in common, use of termination is an involuntary system, but.
Yeah.
If I, in the workplace, from our perspective, as someone who is involved in higher, in higher process set, they kind of, it's all termination. It's a, it, our system doesn't register it as resignation, it's, you're, this is your termination date, this is when you're terminated.
Okay.
I, I was trying to do the, I was trying to not add a such connotation, I was trying to just go with something that was more about the neutral, so that it couldn't be called out by, I don't know.
You don't want to be.
Yeah, okay.
It's harder, energy, we're coming. But it's.
Put, put down.
Well, I think because it's also about now, conditions and terminations.
Yeah.
Like, when you're talking about this, is your turn, the, the date that employment is terminated, like, that's, you know.
Yeah.
But it's a, if it's a, um, bamboo, then.
Yeah.
Okay, another silly question, um. Hey, because I.
Wait.
What? No, I meant for.
No. I have the other silly question. I'm a little comfortable, sorry.
No, your question is, Billy, I was going, I'm like.
I have a question.
Um, the book by assistant, so we've hired a book by assistant. Oh. Is that the whole, like, they're not also doing like other summer library clerk?
It's the whole job.
Okay. That's gotta be hard to stop. Okay.
You'll see in the next report, um, that some, it'll be all the summer reading assistants, I introduce some of that.
I guess I thought, like, are we, are we getting some of those, um, that summer people that we bring in? Are they also all kind of taking a turn, like, is that why the, you know, somebody came in and did the training at the beginning of stuff? Like, I was wondering, like, is the book by, like, a portion of?
Maybe isn't, you know, and actually, the gentleman who's doing it is going to pass it, this is the second year, I think his name's Chris in there, like, writes this right here, he's a big enthusiast. Um, and, you know, he, he's a teacher, so this is something he can do, uh, in the summer. And, um, yeah, I think with the other summer, you know, volunteer or like assistants, they do different tasks. But I think they really care, really wants to make sure she has a committee, you know? Because a lot of the rides, a lot of the requests we're getting are on a weekend, and that's a huge burden on that staff to be every weekend doing something, which is like, you know, it's an every event.
Um, and you kind of preempted where I was going, like, where do we go to find bike enthusiasts who are comfortable riding a bike with a box of books on it, and you have to find somebody who already enjoys and is very into the biking.
You have to take it south of the expressway, up and over those overpass bridges, or up and north, northwest of the park where there's graded.
Yeah.
You know, inclines at some, at some places.
So we like hang out outside of CrossFit and like, like, I'm just trying to think.
There are four bicycles, wow, just saying, go to the CRC and stand by the stationary bike.
Exactly.
Try to like, coach some people, I guess it's like, the speed class.
So, no, I was, I was wondering, like, is this, i- is this something that we're trying to make part of other people's jobs, and that might be why folks are reluctant, or you're saying this is like what they do, and so when we're looking for.
Exactly, and it's, you know, I think I've seen it, some people feel like, it's not like our assumption, right, but, right? You know, I think I've seen this, people feel like, it's not like our assumption, right, but, right, you know, and. I think there are a number of staff that feel comfortable showing love at that apartment, the bike is there and like helping, um, super. That is not comfortable riding.
Basically.
Add experience.
Hmm.
I get it, I know, and we are, you know, in a. Urban environment and it can feel stressful and.
Yeah.
It's not got that agility that I think a regular bicycle way you could ride it, you know?
Equally depth if you need to, yeah, it's a, yeah.
I mean, I'm.
Just so, just so you can, just so you can know, but you can speak for those experiences, there you go.
I kind of wanna watch and try it, I don't wanna try it, though.
Right, so we'll go on to financial reports. They isn't handling much, so people won't try. Okay, that works.
I mean, on that note, yet again, there was a cartoon about a librarian shushing people at my side.
That's not our.
That's not our experience.
Alright. Um, so we have our financial reports, um. Any questions?
How was the, uh? Parking, the electric? Parking.
I don't have a specific report on it now, but I have, I think I heard internally from Matt that it was doing okay. Yeah.
Like sustaining itself?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, you know, it's, if it's sustaining itself, I think it's a worthwhile service to offer people.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think that's, you know, I, you know, I think we'll see. Just a deal with between Rivian and, uh, the, and Volkswagen today. About something for, you know, some kind of shared partner together for an electric car, so. Maybe since, yeah, well, we'll be seeing some more in the future, that's the way it's moving, so. Any other questions about the financial reports?
I saw an article there, that they're, um, that the county is bringing taxes back into the tax collection, back into alignment timeline. So that will, right?
They, yeah, they've already been published on financial records, signed for the August first, you know, it'll be like that in people's mailboxes in the next week or so. It, yeah, it wasn't, I don't think we were in a position to be concerned as long as it was. Not gonna be given December again.
Yeah.
Once, um. Yeah, I think it's. Yeah, so we, yeah, we're not gonna be in a stressed position for that.
Uh, the sales, um, those are the, like, box shops, is that it?
Yep.
And so the total annual budget is forty thousand. And we have, we're at about five, one, six, seven percent of very. Of the, of that annual budget, is that what I'm seeing? Twenty-four or sixty-four.
The revenue. This is all, all buying all our swag.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it was two, so I think the revenue projected was forty thousand, and I think that was. What was anticipated, you know? When we had an executive director and a normal plan, um, we don't. Um, so Julie's doing one of these pop-up shops.
Yeah.
Because I think the sales was anticipated from other activities to additions to the pop-up shop that were projected to. Generate revenue, and I think they were, you know, you're starting from zero, right, you're starting from not having done this at all, you don't know what the demand is, and it'd be, so I, I think. Believe we talked about this in a meeting before, um, that that was just kind of a placeholder number, and then they would see what they generated. So you can see here today, it's a little, you know, over two thousand dollars, so, you know, um. And this month, you know, three hundred, she hasn't gone to different events, but it's been challenging, you know, the park. You can't sell on a lot of events.
Yeah.
Um, cancel the farmer's market, we're gonna do it at, um. Thursday night out, and they said, no, that's just for. I, I'm just, I mean, the Hemingway district and more in a different district. Yes, we were not allowed to sell. And they were, they weren't enjoying it, and so I think she's, they're running into some more issues of finding locations to sell, uh, stuff.
Gotcha.
But there, you know, stuff is cute, and I know Sarah, the book by, you know, has a Q R code and wears the hat, and so, you know.
I wonder if, um, connecting with the E D of the Oak Park First Chamber, Michael, and also.
I mentioned that to her, I was thinking if the chamber would be the way they're giving to some of these events.
Yeah, and also visit Oak Park.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Getting locally is really helpful, um, there. Does the Oak Park still have a physical, physical store?
Second, second floor of, uh. It's on Lake Street. Over there by, um, and Cece, who is the daughter of, um, Stevenson. Right there, it's like over there by Stevenson Park.
It's not on the main, it's not in the, like, the main.
Right.
Yeah, so you're blocked away.
There's a, it's a building on Lake Street, I think it's over there, but it's, it's there, there's the tower, there's the, there's the daughter of, uh, Heat's Rock. The baseball player, um, many, and that, and that, Cece runs to the, to Oak Park, she's a wonderful person.
So then maybe we'll still have still.
No, it's like an office, yeah, like, it's, it's like a, it's on the second floor, but it's in that, but it's in that strip, it's, there's Pete's, there's.
It's not down by the movie theater.
Yes, and that, which was also Lake Street, to be clear, so I would like.
It's.
It could be in Chicago.
East of.
Got us.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry to get us on this, right, oh, no, I. That was, I actually had that same question, so I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked it, cause I was like, hmm, so speaking of this state of May. Speaking, we're not right up to that, I'm reading.
Who pays for these wonderful bags?
We do.
Yeah, so, and there's patrons who don't have to pay for them.
We are, uh, we are, again, rolling up our budget.
Mm-hmm.
So we are trying to curb how many we're giving. Um, you know, if, come down, we didn't get out any bags. During the pandemic, it's been kind of, you want a bag, you get a bag, you know, and now it's kind of, you know, we have them there, we can offer them. One of the things I'm really excited about doing is, we have, got some really nice tote bags that are ready, we'll never rent them. Check them out, ooh, did you have a bigger haul and you don't have a bag, we can check you out a bag. This is an idea that we still come out, we're probably a library that does that, um, and I laugh, so hopefully they won't show the wear and tear. Um, but yeah, we do take away the bags, but, you know. It's, it's costly, you know, it costs a lot of dollars, you know, and so we're trying to. Trying to basically, we're just gonna fashion them for us, and now we have an allotment of our bags and. But they're next, and I have one to.
It's absolutely wonderful to be able to see in the neighborhood.
In the neighborhood, I know.
Do we change the, I think I'm losing it, but like, do we change the designs on them periodically?
We do, I know I have one.
Did you run anyone? Or purple, probably.
Purple, purple is multicultural, we were given this.
Um, no, from the.
Friends of the.
No, it was an event. Over.
The freedom to read.
Freedom, thank you, um, so I'm wondering, like, do we want to sort of align that with the swag? And have, like, specific.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could, as part of the next, um. You know, sort of, you know, planning meeting, talk about, uh, uh, you know, per- perhaps like every branding logo. Discussion, because this red book one is a variation of one that was created many years ago. And it might be worthwhile to revisit and, and look at it.
I mean, I love our logo, but, you know, if we are doing the book by, if we are changing the swag sort of seasonally. Do we wanna do that with the bag as well? Are we using that when people buy swag? Is that helping walking out with it?
Yeah, and I think it's so interesting, because I like the black one with the way, right, but some people feel like it's unfriendly, you know? And it's also just, some things right back.
Why is it unfriendly?
I think they're called up.
Oh.
I think it's, I think it's snazzy. The, I mean, you, they had a green, a royal green.
They do.
It's like the readers.
Earlier readers. Hi, hi, Thomas Scott.
My only complaint is the terribly flattering picture of me on the website with my kid, and. I look like five hundred pounds because I'm wearing a black shirt and then the bag, I just look.
Really should be disappointed, but people are gonna need the bag as big as.
There we go.
There we go.
Alright. With that, let's go on to, is there a motion to approve the disbursements?
We actually go back to the question of the forty thousand, because, well, we got a lot of, all the time of how to try and, like. Increase it, what's happening to compensate for that since this is the end of May? In the budget. We're not gonna get to forty thousand this year.
No, I think that was just a projection.
But it wasn't accounted for in our actual budget spending.
And I'm not sure, I mean. Deficit spending, I know, so.
There was also, but also that is contingent upon additional purchasing of materials. Cause that, that forty thousand also accounted for the purchase, you know, there was, I don't know what the. The, our markup would be, but if we're not selling as much, we're also not punishing, we weren't buying a bunch ahead of time. You know, at any given time, so it's like, if it's not selling, we're also not just repeatedly, you know, bought, you know, holding lots of stock.
So our next one, can we get the number?
Oh, what?
What are the differences that Matt's talking about?
I, I, I won't have this until we actually close out the budget year, but I mean, I don't think, we are working right now. If you in the board packet, there is a link to the, to timeline, to build a balanced budget. Right now, we're looking at projections for the major year. What are we projecting? Is that, you know, you asked for the summer, you know, you're projecting this end of the whole line. So once that's completed, I think mid-July, we'll have a better sense of what we're looking at. You know, are some lines at the under, are legal lines that way over, you know, how are we going to assess that? Because some of these other lines in here that have, you know, lots of books, you know, there's seven thousand in there, you know, we're already eighty-four, is there really more?
We're already at almost two hundred percent of our interest. We're to offset that.
And we're, we also just moved, uh, your same account to loan trust for a higher interest account, um, because we was just going to make you know, it's for somebody who's making. So, there are other ways in the productive revenue, and I think it will, you know.
And it's, and to your point, for next year, maybe we get a better idea of what is the ratio of spend to income. And then maybe we don't deal with hard dollar numbers, maybe we think more this is like. A seasonal percentage, and we start looking at what quarters do we think, cause I'm thinking like Christmas and summer, we'll see things versus.
There, there might, you know, there might be a bump out of the book set, out of the book there.
Book fair opening day, she's gonna have a good setup, so, yeah, I think when this is built. You know, and now many years to look at and.
It was.
Yeah.
Right. So, Christina, does the baby like the Oak Park one seat?
Yeah, I have to send some pictures, uh, he loves them, they're great, thank you. But yeah, I have one for like the next several sizes season, so he'll be wearing it, he'll be sporting it, but I like the new stuff so much. I really like the new design stuff, though, too, this, I, I'm trying not to spend money, but I might.
There we go. Alright. Is there a motion, uh, to approve the resolution of the disbursements? So, a little bit of that. Margaret, that's the second, uh, any discussion? Here, now, all of the bitters say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any? Thank you, uh, additional reports, I guess.
I got Matt, I did not.
Um. I did needs, um, we got a presentation from the village on, um.
Potential tip.
Uh, potential tip related around the more concrete, uh, sites. Um, and the development channel they've, uh, run to, uh, and the, and the. But, you know, who bought, the person, the entity that bought that property and their challenges, um. And how, and then development of that site has been a language, so that, that, uh. Uh, occupied much of this section, and how, what that impact would be, so. Uh, Planet Green. Um, Planet Green, I was not able to attend the meeting, I don't know that Matt was there as well. But, uh, it's one of the really exciting things for me about Planet Green, is that through a grant. We were able to send some teenagers to the United Nations Climate Change Action, well. Uh, in, in Baku, uh, Uzbekistan, and one of my neighbors is a teenager, you know, from local P R F. Uh, puppy, will be able to go there, and we had ten teenagers go to, uh, visit Sharm El Sheikh. Uh, last year, and it's a really, really important and wonderful outreach. With these kids who are from not just Oak Park, but from the surrounding communities. We have four, four kids who went to Sharm El Sheikh in Egypt last year, and in November this year, we'll have four kids. Who go to this climate change, United Nations event, and they come back, and, um. I would really love to have them come to speak here at Oak Park, and our, our, our staff here who are interested in. Those kinds of things, really need to get all of that. And I'm sorry, is it Christine?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, I don't think that she was at the meeting either, but let's encourage her to get to Planet Green. Matt, uh, from Facilities has been there, but I'd really love us to get more involved.
I think it's talking to Alex, and Christine's role, her sustainability role is just a year old.
Hmm.
So, you know, she's still alive, you know, kind of thinking about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, there's such a wonderful opportunity for community outreach to this, so Christina and Matt, and I, you know, we need to get together.
There, there was a talk, um, during, like, the state, long period of the pandemic, there was a talk.
Yeah.
By the illegal, um, that was a virtual, that was really, really amazing, now listening to.
Yeah, we did, we're going now, it's just.
So it could be a really great event at the library. Alright, friends.
Um, they met Monday, uh, June seventeenth, which is normally our end of session, so I did not attend. But, um, they did notice that they are a nonprofit, um, they now have chunks and online checking. In their checking account, they have twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. And in their money market, they have forty thousand, seven hundred, forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Um, they are excited to, I'm sorry, excited. Uh, they are excited to, I'm sorry, excited is my word, not theirs, uh, I'm just reading their minutes, um. You know, about the book fair and they're aiming some, you know, focus on history, mystery readers, science fiction. Sounds really exciting, um, there are a little concerned about the fact that there are donation numbers are a little bit down. So they're considering extending the dates, but I have not actually checked to see those dates. Have been extending, extended and they are um looking for volunteers for the Fourth of July. Great, if anyone is so interested and they thought that they're dating the village, that's something, my word again, out there's. They also gave us a check.
Oh, well, that's even better, that's not in the minute. I didn't notice that you were there, so maybe I should have just given the whole.
We have eight, nine checks and they issued a check, we're really good. Yeah, a great voucher, lecture plan, things are happening.
So my, I got an email, I don't know whether it came just to us or generally saying we need more books.
Yeah.
Where, where did that email go?
Question, because I know they were worried about their books. I just stopped down and talked to Kat before the meeting and she said they're doing well, I do think they're going to extend, but she said what they're gonna do, it kind of was a. How exciting the night before, you know, we actually have another week, oh, I like that.
And there was, there was a, a note in Wednesday journal too, that said we need more books.
It, it was that they were fine, but yeah.
I feel like before the meeting, gosh, David mentioned that. Like there were a lot of books dropped off here recently.
Today, I mean, I was just telling her.
Okay, I was like, did this call already go out somewhere and people are?
It was in the Wednesday journal last week.
Does Friends of the Library work with Thrift Books? Which is working with public libraries to, it's basically the non-Amazon.
Yeah.
But Thrift Books is saying, public libraries, you need to work with us, does Friends of Library work with Thrift Books? Which is based in Northern California?
I don't believe so.
They should.
There's been a lot of groups over the years that have tried to work with libraries around and friends groups.
But for these books is almost, I mean, it's really huge now, so.
See, I'm really excited about the partnership, we have an open books bin out in the corner and they were so gracious, they gave us the key to that bin. And said anything that was donated in the last month will go to the book sale. So that's kind of a nice echo hours thing, so.
I was wondering about that, I was hoping that was probably why we had fewer books, because we started doing like year round, but.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yes, he just asked me to have the tea backs.
It was also a wonderful um. Online resource of, to talk to people who go to these various library book fairs and buy books. And I think that Oak Park Public Libraries, Friends of the Library is part of this, so they can tell all these like book dealers. Come.
Yeah.
And then you can just get the stuff, so I'm hoping that they're.
The, the book dealers probably is at a point of contention, what was at the high school. Which is part of why they instituted like a, like a, like a cover church on Fridays. Because it had, because they would come in with scanners and just, and they would line up and go through. And, and just scan it like they would come with a list of, these are books we're looking for for our store. And they will just go through, scan, 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 grab, scan it like, and just. And Friday was always a big rush of book dealers coming.
Nothing wrong with that, I think, from a capitalist's point of view.
You got, you got money for the friends, but it. A lot of, a lot of neighbors in Oak Park. Because the book dealers were very rude and would couple people out of the way. And like, because they didn't care, they didn't care because these, these, these people weren't living here, so they were like.
It's, it's a community event in addition to that, that is.
And uh, do the little, little book, book things have to set up, uh, you know, something doesn't really matter for the, the book fair?
No, the little free libraries. So, okay, thank you. Uh, next is new business, the Village Oak Park Fuel IGA. Yes.
This is every five years, I think, when I was talking to somebody that have another agency, they want a penny. So we just believe our fuel from the village.
The public works building over there, um, on South Oak Park, by Oak Park.
Right, I think, so.
Is there, so they, they go to the packet?
Twenty-two cents now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, is there any questions, concerns?
Not penny.
Over five years, over five years, yes.
That is the cutest inflection I've ever.
I know, I actually was like, wait, is that right?
Is there a motion to approve the IGA?
So.
They've been on, written as seconded by Virginia, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Wait, Christina, were you a yay or a nay? Over the, over the speaker, it sounded like a nay, so it threw me for a second.
Oh no, I'm sorry, that's like how my toddler talks, it's like a, yeah. Never know if it's an affirmative or not, sorry about that.
Thank you, everyone, so the next item is our uh non-resident library card and annual fee. Uh, this is pursuant to state law, um, to qualify for everything to be this. This is something we have to pass. Um, no one has, I mean, we, like, no one's ever gotten it, because to call. We have to have this as a rate, but in order to qualify for it. You have to be in like the unincorporated jurisdiction that doesn't have a library. Serving it, a public library serving it. And you, and you have to go to nearest public library service area. And there are no unincorporated areas that upshot Oak Park. That someone would live in that would feed into it, we have to do it by law. But it is something that, if based on previous discussions, I don't think there is anyone who is legally eligible for this. Because you would have to go through, I think the closest one is for other public library areas. As you get before, before they will get to us.
Probably like years ago when I heard Jeremy talk about the person, I thought that he had mentioned. That there might be, uh, it was a very, it was a, it was a.
This is a really important thing to rural areas. Yeah, I, that's actually fair.
My actual last two libraries have been just the libraries, where there is not a open area surrounding it.
Yeah.
Just lines on corporate funding, so you did have to know.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Think a lot of the most useful things about this is to figure out. Uh, the pro cabinet debt, pro library centers, that's the used to.
Yes, I think this is a really interesting figure because it lets me know. Um, that we have a tax base. And do you realize what your family is having to pay in the library? It's like, you know, four hundred and fifty dollars or whatever.
Yes.
And um, they kind of go, wow, you know.
Yeah, and the, yeah, and the calculation is, is set by state law too, it's.
But it's very natural to come up with an election for me, is say, use your library. So.
But it's not, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, this is, yeah, this is a pro forma thing that it recorded to enact and accept as the new fee. Is there a motion? Ted Meacham, moved by Ted, Tuesday motion, seconded. Seconded by Suzanne. Was there any further discussion?
No, my question was, what was it last year? I feel like it was like four thirty.
Four thirty, four, four.
Forty-three, okay.
Forty-seven, oh, I was like.
No, that's twenty-nine.
No, that's twenty-one.
Twenty-three, yeah, I was, I'm sorry, four thirty-one, oh, yeah.
Like twenty-one, it's interesting that twenty-nine one was one of us and that's.
Uh, we, I think that was when we uh retired a bunch of the debt. The debt, and ancillary to that, it's absolutely wonderful that when you check out books to the library and you ask for receipt. You see there, you saved.
Yeah.
So it has been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is adopted. It is adopted, thank you, all right, with that, um. We, the next item is our executive director search firm, um. I do believe that there is some discussion regarding our interviews that we had in closed session last week. That will uh, re- that required closed session uh for, before we have a final vote on that. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Uh, to discuss the en- employment interns, uh, the independent contractor for the library.
Yeah, that's.
By Ted, seconded by Virginia, uh, with that, will the secretary please take a roll call, yay or nay vote?
Sure.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee John.
Yes.
Trustee Fairfax, yes, trustee boss.
Yes.
Trustee Unruh, yes, trustee Rogers.
Yes. Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, we got you. All right, with that, we will enter closed session, um, will anyone who's not a board member please?
Do you want to stop that, I'm going to like to see if anyone's right outside.